We're religious to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody. Welcome to the January 22nd meeting of the council. I wish to welcome Barry, his first meeting. And Randy will not be here, so this will be the six of us. First on the agenda, Parkview.
Hello everyone. I know some of you I got to talk with last night and start today. Just kind of wanted to give you an update of what's been going on since we've been here. So these are our number of runs, patients, and mileage. Before I start, for those of you that haven't met me, my name is Carla Giebert. I'm the EMS manager for the Northwest market of Parkview Health EMS, which includes Fulton County. We do have an onsite supervisor who's here again. Her name is Tiffany. She's not here with us this evening. And then my director, who is also the director of all of Parkview EMS is Chad O. And I know many of you have already dealt with him. So runs, patients, and mileage. So we've done 1,320 runs. For those of you that were here last evening, it didn't calculate the final number, so this is that number. Patients, we've transported 784 patients with a little over 58,000 miles. And so we're getting gaining numbers and gaining patients. Started off a little slow, which is what we anticipated. That's pretty normal when we go into a new area. We break it down by transfers and 911 calls, so I kind of wanted you to be able to see that. Along with all of the Parkview Health EMS teams that we have throughout the system. You can see, we've done 200 transfers and 1,033 911 calls. That's about 80/20, so about 20% transfers, 80% 911 call. Which is pretty much in line. Most of ours are probably 70/30, but 80/20 is also still in line with that. Response times. Everybody wants to know, how long does it take to get here? And so we break it down several ways, but this is probably my favorite way to see that. And when you look at Fulton, almost to the bottom there. We have 12% of our calls in under five minutes, which puts us at 61% for, at under 10 minutes. Under 15 minutes, it brings that up to 83%, 92%, I'm sorry, 93% under 20 minutes and 7% over 20. And that's important because anything that's over 20 minutes, I break down, I put on a spreadsheet. I'm going to look at it, I'm going to drill down and be able to, you could call me tomorrow with a run today that was over 20 minutes, I'm going to be able to tell you why it took us that long to get there. Because we want to know that, right? Most of the time it is because we have multiple calls go out at the same time. Unfortunately, like I've said before, we can't schedule 911 calls. And so I can't put them in the line to be able to go. So when they come, we go. Sometimes it's because there's an address mix-up, and we're going to own that when that happens. Sometimes it's because you can't get there from here. The county is big enough that it just takes a little longer to get there. But the majority of the time, hyper-majority of the time, it's because multiple calls come out at the same time. And we're moving assets to get there and resources. Along with that, just so you know, the national average response time that was calculated on the national scale used to be 13 minutes, 90%, under 13 minutes, 90% of the time. They then changed that to 13 minutes, 80% of the time. Today, they changed it to 14 minutes, 80% of the time. So we're well within that. And the reason that's done, this is national, the reason that's done is because there are less and less ambulances and resources throughout the country, everywhere. EMS has a huge hole. There are deserts of EMS in Indiana and throughout the nation. And that's why the national standards have changed to include that. So we still like, we keep track of it to know where we're at. So any questions on that? Cardiac arrest data. We've had 20 cardiac arrests pre-hospital since we've been here. Eleven of them, we called at the scene after working, which is 55%, but didn't, we're going to get pulses back. Four of them, we did not work. They were obviously dead upon arrival. We had four, five, that we got return of spontaneous circulation. We got pulses back. We had strong pulses back at the scene. And two of them were released from the hospital. That puts us at a 10% safe rate, which is double the rate of the national average, it's 5%. So we're happy with that. I mean, we'd love to have more, right? But we're happy with how things are going there, especially in a rural community like Fulton County. Medication verification. This is something that, if you've heard me talk on a quality side, that you know I'm very passionate about. EMS as a whole, throughout the state of Indiana, throughout the country, does not do medication verification documented. We pull it out of our bag, we give the medication to our patients. About five years ago, Parkview started down this curve to really look at making sure that we're verifying that we're giving the right medication at the right time, the right route, to the right patient. We've only got one patient, so we've got a pretty good chance of hitting the patient. But we want to make sure everything else is right too. And so we have, all of our medications aren't to be verified and to be documented. And ways that we document, we don't have a scanner like they have in the hospital. Any of you that have been in the hospital for an outpatient or inpatient know, they're going to scan you, they're going to say, "Give me your name, give me your date of birth", right, to make sure. We don't have that. So we're going to verify with my partner. If you're my partner, I'm going to say, "Is this fentanyl that I'm going to give my patient, or is this the medication that I said I was going to give?" If the patient's awake and alert, I'm going to show it to the patient. I can tell you that we really get a lot of positive comments back from the patients. They're like, "Thank you for checking. Thank you for checking." But if they can't, we're going to go to our partner. We may ask a firefighter. We've all carried protocol books in our pockets, so we're going to pull them out and check on that. It takes very few seconds and it just keeps them safe. And I think as you look at this, 98.54% of our medications are documented across the health system. And we have a less than 1%, 0.12% medication error across the system. I'm proud of that. Quality, doing what's best for our patients is what we do. That's why we're here. And to be able to tout that, I'm very proud. We're one of the only services in the state of Indiana and throughout the nation, very few that are doing this. So we've actually been asked to write papers on it and move this out. Very proud of this right here. Roster positions. I asked the commissioners last night to stand up and do a dance with me, and they all looked at me. We are fully staffed. Would you all dance with me? Very excited about this. It's a start July 1st, and we have all positions, including our low position to fill people that have PTO one time off. The sheriff told me last night that I jinxed myself, so probably, but I'll take it, the win while I've got it. So all positions are filled, all of our trucks are up, our rotations are up and fully staffed. So very, very excited about that. Team training and education. When they're there, if they're not on a run, they're still really busy. We have a simulation lab. If those of you ever have any questions or want to come see this, please get ahold of me. Love to have you come to the station. We have, from the Marrow Center, we have a high-definition mannequin that comes out in an actual ambulance, so they're working in a training ambulance. This mannequin can do everything. This mannequin has Bible signs. This mannequin can sweat. This mannequin can have a baby. This mannequin can have any pulses, wherever we have pulses, anything that we have. This mannequin can talk. We can go behind the scenes and actually talk out. And so the training is very, very real, very lifelike. Every caregiver that we have, every EMS EMT, a VMT and paramedic, are mandated to go through this minimum of twice a year. Most of them go, end up going through it about four times a year, but they're mandated twice a year. And when I say twice a year, that's four scenarios, because each time they go through, they have two different scenarios. These are trained with our medical director and with multiple other trainers, and that's all they do. So very excited about that. They do come out to our station here. They'll be coming to Akron several times this year. We've had lots of patient care reporting, charting, doc education. We've been doing protocol updates every year. Parkview looks at all of our protocols and reviews them with multiple medical directors throughout northern Indiana. And then we do updates. We have lots of quality audit review. All of our caregivers have the, they have the ability to go through at least two to four audit reviews a month. And then what we call 30, 60, 90 day rounding. And that is where my supervisor and my training officer are sitting down with every EMT and paramedic on the roster at their 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, to make sure that everything's going as it should be. Also been really busy out in the community. We love this. Our employees, this is one of their favorite parts, is to go out and do things. So just working with everyone, working with our new 911 director, our first responders, and our fire departments, our Kiwanah Fall Festivals. You can read this, I don't have to read all this for you. But there's lots of things that we've been doing. We will be starting an EMR class this spring, late summer, probably right after Labor Day, honestly, will be the EMT class. We had hoped to start those in the fall and sprint, but we didn't have enough participation to start a class. So that's why it held on until spring to make sure that we have enough people. We don't want to do a full-blown class for three people. So that list is growing, so we'll be taking care of that and starting that. One of the other things that I didn't talk about last evening, and that is our engagement with Woodlawn Hospital. We've been working on their stroke accreditation with them, we have chest pain center support, transfer process to be able to move patients that need a higher level of care easier into the Parkview system if they want to come to Parkview. We will take them to any other hospital that these patients and these physicians want them to go to. But we want to work with them on those. Patient experience support, just different conversations. So we spend quite a bit of time in there also. And then, wanted to bring this to you. I love feel-good stories. These are two of our EMTs. These are both pretty well-known EMTs, Brandon Ernest and Davis Watkins. They picked up an elderly patient from the hospital to take her home. And she couldn't really do anything, so they went out and cleaned her icy snowy sidewalks, brought her mail in, took her trash out, things that were just very difficult for her to do, and she didn't have any help. This was brought to me from one of the other coworkers who happened to drive by, saw, stopped, asked them what they were doing, and they said, "Well, we're just helping her out." And so they wanted to make sure, he wanted to make sure that I knew this about him. So just one of the things that I really like about making that difference. Any questions or things for me? All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Next, Department of Labor.
Thanks. I really don't have much. Welcome to the two new ones. Glad to have you. I met with Priority Dispatch, which handles our medical policies, or not policies, procedures when someone calls 911. We're doing police and fire. Officially met with them. I've talked about it before. And we're setting a date in February to start the moving forward process for those for police and fire. Really, that's the only updates I really have. I am finalizing plans with Evans Consuls to come in and move my console. They gave us a quote for $2,000, which was pretty reasonable. And we're just setting a date to get that done. That's it.
That was, Evans quote was $2,000 to?
Yeah, we'll shift position three back, which will give us just enough space to be compliant.
That is pretty reasonable.
So, you know, it's just like anything else. We got the quote for 2,000, then it's requested that we have an electrician come in. I would like the same electrician that was there to set things up, that way nothing gets messed up. So I'm just being conscientious and careful that, you know, 2,000's the limit. Keeping my fingers crossed we don't run into any issues that would cause more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for running?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Guyer?
I don't have a whole lot. Just to bring you up to date on what the guys have been doing. There's others staying warm the last few days. Patched holes, rented brush cutter. They've been working with RMC, going around cutting trees along the side of the road, like we do every winter, before they fall down in the middle of the night someday. Just, you know, plow and snow when we had it. We've got a lot of bridge work going on in the county. Bridge 161, that's a federal aid project that we let in December. We came in 400,000 under on that. It's a federal aid, 80/20 match. We're waiting for a pre-con meeting, probably here in the next month or so. Do construction this summer. Bridge 170, I just turned it in as a federal aid project. And that is over Mill Creek on 1,000 West, over there by Star City Blacktop. Maybe I know where that's at. Did present that, ended up giving me a good feeling after the presentation, so I'm hopeful for getting that awarded. That'll be five years out. All these federal aid projects take five years to develop, so, once we get down. Bridge 106, we just signed, last night signed a task order for engineering on that. We're planning on trying to have that ready for July on the second call of community crossings. Turn that in, try to build it either this fall or next spring. And Bridge 95, we've got a big, large box culvert, if anybody's seen that down by Naima Lake, that's up along the side of the road. We've been waiting for permits to put that in. I think we're pretty well good to go on that, so. Quite a bit of bridges. Community crossings, that call is open right now. We've already submitted. We have to Friday, I believe, to change anything. But we put in 250 South from Kiwanah over the county line, the Star City Blacktop, 550 South, and 950 South from 17 to 900 West. So we're going to open bids on those March 3rd, pending that they're awarded by community crossings.
Want to hear about that?
They told me, when I submitted these, they're trying to award those in February this year. I know they might not make it. Traditionally, it's been March, but they're trying to speed projects up, so. Either way, should be here in the next month or two. And then we've got countywide bridge inspection. We've set, had an RFP out for that. We got five LOIs, letters of interest for that. Commissioners, John and I are going to be scoring those here soon, so. That's a four-year federal aid project. They go around, check every bridge. We've got 62 bridges, so. And then the dump trucks, we got, they're in the shop over at WA Jones, getting outfitted, ready to bring home here, one of these days soon.
After the snow. After the snow.
Most likely. But I think we're already after the snow, right?
Yeah, we can hope.
That's all I have for Highway.
Any questions for John? Anybody in public? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dawn?
The only thing I have is we have training this weekend. We have a storm watcher, squatter, training from 10 to 12. And then at 2:00, our ham operators in our area are running a ground, winter ground radio. It's kind of like a contest thing. So they'll be there this Saturday. So all day, basically all day, with a break for lunch. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Dawn? Jennifer?
No.
Casey?
I am working on a kind of countywide press release that I'm going to do. Basically because the state of Indiana has increased their cost tables, how they're doing some things this year. So just for example, I was not reassessed in my township this year in my house because of the new implementation of the cost tables, jumped up 80 grand. So, huh, yeah. To offset that, because they increased that, there's some options that they have given us that we can use with our market factor, which is a rolling annual change. Basically, it's what the value of your house after we depreciate it gets multiplied against before it gets taxed. So hopefully, if we can figure those numbers correctly when the state decides to give me the rest of the information, we'll be able to dial that down so it's more of a realistic cost before our tax dollars hit. It will go up regardless. I can't stop it from going up, but I can stop it from going up, tens upon tens of thousands of dollars for everybody that owns a home. This year, it was commercial, industrial, and residential. Next year, it will be anything that is yard-related. Whole buildings, sheds, gazebos, that type of thing, pools, in-ground pools. They have a whole list. So market factor doesn't play into that, but the cost per square foot, they found after they increased it two years ago, did not fit the market of materials. And the state across the border was, just across the line, was just all too low. I know that there's some House Enrollment Acts, I just came from a conference last week. There's some House Enrollment Acts that can possibly affect our taxes and how we're funded going forward. I am really staying on that and trying to see. We have a liaison through the County Assessors Association that pays attention to all those bills. And there's three of them that highly impact how we're funded as a county. He doesn't think that this is going to have any traction for this session. So that's good. But farm ground has gone up as well. And there's a few bills that are hitting the House floor this year that will almost make some of the taxes that go on farm ground so minimal that it would highly impact our tax dollars as well as how we're funded. So I don't know how well that's going to track, but I'm doing my best to keep a watch and contest some of those bills. I will be on the House floor to contest some of them. So we'll see what's going to happen with that. So that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions. Before I do my press release, I will send it to all of you so you can read it. If there's something you want me to add, take out. If you have questions about it before I send it off to the newspapers, let me know. I'm more than happy to address anything I can. I won't throw anything out there that I don't have an answer to already.
Okay, thanks for the good news.
Yeah, hey, anytime. Why I'm here.
Any other questions for Casey? Travis?
I gotta follow that, geez.
Hey, anyone better know what I have.
Good evening. So I sent out the reports last week. Were there any questions on any of those year comparisons or anything? We did see an increase in warrants served and criminal arrests and incidents. I think a lot of that's a direct result of our being staffed and our agency's pretty young. They're out there proactive, both in the exam nights. No questions on that. We had 150 inmates this morning when I looked. We're holding 78 for Grant County right now. 13 federal, nine for DOC, and seven for Howard. We invoiced for $124,588 for the month of December for holding out-of-county inmates. There's been a pause on the maintenance building until February for concrete, just because of the weather. With that being said, they did do some additional prep work and things earlier that they want paid for. I talked to Kathy before the meeting. Since the beginning of the year, the money got taken out of the maintenance building fund and put back into the maintenance split, the 15% split for holding out-of-county inmates. So we got to get that money back in there for Chad to pay the bills. What we did last year, waiting on that, is we paid for it out of commissary and then just reimbursed commissary with your guys' approval. So tonight, I'm asking if we can pay those bills out of commissary and get reimbursement from the maintenance building, once that money's been allocated back in there.
Are we that short in maintenance?
It's not short, it's just not in there. And maybe Kathy can explain it a little better than I can as an auditor. But the money for, at the end of the year, you guys approved $150,000. Chad got $150,000 put in there, that at the end of the year, it gets taken out, whatever hasn't been spent.
Goes back in, rolls back into the general fund.
It rolls back into that maintenance, that 15% maintenance fund.
I understand that.
Yeah, so he's got-
You want to say that a little louder so everybody can understand?
Funds that are not expended in a budget, well, the unexpended funds are reverted back into the general fund.
Now, as I go back into county general, as I go back to that 15% maintenance?
In your case, what that goes back into the 15%.
So it's just a matter of Chad getting my Chantel, figuring out the process to get that money back into-
Well, to appropriate it.
Right.
Long way to go up short.
No, he's not. And there's plenty of money in the maintenance. We're putting 15% of this $125,000, $100,000 every month in there, so there's plenty in there. But he hasn't came close to the 150 that you guys have already approved. It's just a matter of the way, the way the building's to change going between the two counties.
Should we have assembled that?
No, no. It'll work out. It's just, he'll just have to temporarily use the commissary till we can do the, we can do appropriation next month and get that book back.
And we did that last year, waiting on that money to build up a little bit. They wanted money to start right out the gate. So you guys approved it a couple of times last year for commissary to pay for that and then you reimbursed with a claim, so.
Do you want to quickly, for, I don't know if our two new members understand what we're talking about, the 100 to 70, 15 and 15, would you explain that? And maybe they don't need it, I don't know, but-
So hold, you guys passed an ordinance, well, the council passed an ordinance, well, county, council and commissioners passed an ordinance. Holding out of county inmates, including federal inmates and everything else. Like I said, last month, we invoiced for a little over $124,000. 70% of that, $124,000 goes into a bond reduction fund. It can't be touched for 10 years to pay off a bond as soon as the 10 years is up. 15% of that goes into a maintenance fund that can be used for maintenance purposes at the jail, including the maintenance building. The council last year approved the maintenance building. Up to $150,000 out of that. And 50% goes into general operations of the jail. We used some of the operational funds last year to buy a new transport vehicle for the jail and assisted with some of the salary increases that I requested for holding these out-of-county inmates. So basically, it's taxpayer money, it's just not our taxpayer money. This money's coming from Grant County, coming from Howard County, coming from the Department Corrections, and then coming from the US Marshal Service, so. Any questions on that? And I can get you guys a copy of the ordinance on that, if you're at all interested in it.
Well, I was just looking here to see, not including what we have here.
But those are cash balances.
Yeah, cash balances.
But that's not, means it hasn't appropriated.
Yeah, well, the facility fund is one, we got $1.2 million.
And the bond reduction.
And the bond reduction. That's the big key.
Yes.
Eight years down the road, seven years, whatever it is, that we can pay on a bond to save tax money. So that's what's in that fund.
Any questions on that? So I'm just, Ron, I guess I'm just, I don't know if I need a motion for you guys. Your blessing to go ahead and use that commissary, if I need to approve from you guys, or?
I think you do.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with it. Does anyone else have an issue with it?
Okay.
You are blessed.
Pardon me?
You are blessed.
All right, thank you. Prosecutor's Office issued a release last week concerning the officer involved shooting. I think considering the matter closed, I don't know if you guys saw that or anything, but we consider the matter closed. We've completed all of our internal investigations, our administrative investigations, so matter's closed.
The officers are doing?
Officers are doing well, yeah, so. We went ahead, we got obviously spilling with GPS in the vehicles. We've had that for 18 months or so. We went ahead, we got two jail transport vehicles. We went ahead and got GPS put in both of those for accountability and transparency, so. Now we've got, we've got GPS in all of our patrol and transport vehicles, so. Worked with the Health Department, we entered into an MOU with them. They were able to get us three AEDs for our patrol vehicles. That puts an AED in every patrol vehicle that we have on duty right now. The MOU, all it does is, we have to go help them out for some safety stuff over the summer for pass-out guns, or gun locks at some of the events over the summer, which we're already in that program anyway, so we pass them out any time, so. It was a win-win for both of us, so. And I think that's all I've got. If you guys have questions for any-
Any questions for Travis? Anybody? Thank you very much. Ms. Rowell?
I've got things for you today.
Pardon me?
Paperwork.
Oh, great.
So we are in the process of implementing our warming center, which has been challenging and rewarding at the same time. I don't even know what I would do without Dawn ever here. And Whitney Yates, who is our volunteer coordinator, the church that was willing to be our guinea pig, Church of the Heartlands, Woodlawn Hospital- of the Heartland, Woodmont Hospital, I mean, the list is endless of individuals who have come alongside and made that possible. So, just give a brief kind of information about where we are in that, as well as a document of the current resources, resource days for Beavis &amp; Home. So, Dawn and Whitney and I are going to meet tonight to get some additional challenges worked out with the warming center. Brittany's going to talk to us too, because Brittany's amazing. And so, we are looking at, hoping that we will have the warming center for January, February, and March. January, it's church-based that we were able to partner in understanding of what that meant with fellowship missions out of Warsaw, who started with that model. So, each church takes a month, and intake is from, currently from six to eight, with individuals being given a warm soup or hot dog, something to eat, spend the night, and then in the morning, they are to depart wherever they are to go, whether that's work or whatever it is that they do. So, we have struggled with a bit of miscommunication, because as all great projects, there was what worked in Warsaw, and then there's what's going to work in Fulton County. And so, I just had a conversation with Wes about that, as the team was attempting to try to figure out the details. We had folks who took it upon themselves to put Facebook posts and decide what we were doing, and it got everything a little bit jabberwocky there for a while, but we are grateful that we are finalizing all of the challenges that we planned a whole year for and never saw coming. So, every good project you planned for, and then things that you would have never experienced or never thought were possible, happened, so. But we're super grateful for the support of, we have gotten so many donations, I have never been more blessed...
Linens from the hospital.
Linens from the hospital, Dawn's whispering things I forgot, but yeah, we've never been more blessed to be able to have donations from so many individuals and support. It's just getting the community to understand that, one of the rumors was that we were entrapping people. That was the Facebook post, that we were having a warming center to entrap people and put them in jail, which is not what we are doing. But there was a large amount of that, so that is not something, for the record, that we were doing, so. But we're grateful, so we're going to continue to do that. And then, with the Beavis &amp; Home, we are continuing to host them here. We have Brandy, who is the new victim advocate that has been hired by Rachel. She is the individual who will work with and help support the Beavis &amp; Home, what they're doing, as well as what she does through the prosecutor's office. We had been asked if we had a victim advocate, I don't know what the official title is, but we did not have that until Rachel Arndt actually helped with Mike Mars to make that happen, so. So, great things here. And then, in addition, we are working with the Chamber to talk about transportation. It was identified in a plan that was done, that we have employers who are not receiving employees because of transportation needs, and Transpo is in partnership with Fulton County Hope and the Chamber to figure out how we can address that need, and hopefully be able to help individuals who are unable to get to work because they have unreliable transportation, be able to do that, get people from being in their homes and into work. So, lots of really neat things that we're doing, and some things we don't know whether we're coming or going, but they're helping to hopefully solve some of these issues to help individuals who need the help, so.
Any questions for Amy? Amy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, you got anything?
Yep.
Have I missed any department heads? Okay. And next, we've got the Soil and Water Conservation and Appropriations Contract. Did everybody get a chance to look through that? Any questions, comments?
Pretty much the same thing as year to year.
Pretty much, pretty much, except now, instead of paying, as the bills come in, we give them X amount of dollars upfront, and then we don't get the bills again. It's up to them to comply with the State Board of Accounts and all that issue. So if there aren't any more questions, Amy, I will entertain a motion to approve, as written.
So moved.
Pete moved to approve, all second. Chase Saglin, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. I have this to sign. Write them down. And we've got minutes from the January 7th meeting. Have a good chance to look them over. Any changes, questions? I will entertain a motion to approve, the minutes as written. Oh, I'm sorry, I cut ahead of myself. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Pete moved to approve, a second?
Second.
Steve, second, all in favor? Barry, you have to sit this one out.
I do. Like I wasn't here.
That's all right. I appreciate that, no. Barry was not here, so five, zero. And any old business? Chase?
Uh, no, sir.
Barry? We'll make it easy on you.
I don't have any old business.
Barry?
No.
Steve?
No.
Pete?
No, sir.
I do not.
No, sir.
Any old business? Next, new business. Chase?
No, sir.
I'll skip Barry this time. Patty?
No.
Pete?
No, sir.
I do not, you? New business in the crowd? Okay, go ahead. State your name and say your name.
Lacy Hallway. No, you're not supported. You're going to talk for me.
There's, there's a group of us, Ron, that would like to point out a problem that we're seeing in the county, and we want to bring it to attention for you to consider. And that is, that's the fact that you have a problem with retraining in the county. You have, you have 126 people employed, and over half of those have been employed less than five years. Your turnover rate in this county is high. I don't know what the number would be that it costs us to retrain these employees, bring them back, you know? Every time we have to, every time I have to train a new person to fly a snow, pave, all that, it takes years to learn that. And that's expensive for us, that's a valuable asset to lose. And I'm sure, like Casey's office, which I don't even understand how that office works, I couldn't imagine having to retrain somebody to do that.
It's a lot. There's a lot involved. It's, it's a minimum of six months of state training before I can actually even put my hands on them, to train them in the software to do what they need to do. It's a lot of time and money invested into that, and then continuing education, if they continue to stay with me, and the time invested and money that's invested to keep their continuing education up, which is required for each of them to hold their jobs with me in the state. So, my oldest retained employee, I think, is five years as of right now, and that's not including me in my time at the county, although I'm elected now, it's not part of this. But my newest is maybe a year with me if that. So, it's tough, because they see what's happening, and they do realize that other counties around us don't have the same pay base, for various reasons, basically, because we don't have the same industry, we don't have the same tax base. You know, there's things that come into play, but when they look at it, they look at the training, the time, the amount of hours that they put into themselves, and what they're required to do versus the similar counties, which, you know, we all have the same criteria. So, to kind of offset that, Lacy went ahead and did a polling of one, two, three, four, five counties around us to see about longevity. Yeah, absolutely.
I don't mean to overstep you. But I checked with, Hawes and I went through, HR department went through, we get the average of 19 surrounding counties, and that average comes to $2,075 that they're paying for longevity per year. We're paying 300, at its max. That's after the 11th year is completed, about 200 for five years. So, there's a big gap between us and other counties. The whole time I've been employed with the county, about 25, 26 years, this has never been addressed, changed, adjusted, looked at, that I know of. And I know, Rick, you mentioned last night, that you can't recall ever being touched either, so. It's, it's something to consider. I gave you on this paper I handed you, a breakdown based on the average of those 19 counties, if we went with $2,000 at a maximum after 20 years, just to show you what it is. And gave you the, what it would cost, even with taxes. It would come to, I believe it's $75,000 altogether. Yeah, $75,355 altogether, if you went with this example. This is $38,511 over what you budgeted this year. In December, you did pay out $14,114 in longevity, so.
What I just passed out is what Lacy did the footwork on, and this is just the surrounding counties and how they break down their longevity pay. I'm here, more or less, to support this, because I really think that, you know, our employees do a lot, and I'm very grateful. I do have one that I feel is always a constant flight risk, because of what she sees around her and what we don't offer, so. Anything I can do to kind of help keep my employees, I'm more than happy to step on board if it's logical. I, I know that some of you have been talked to by Lacy about this, and, and there was a couple situations that looked better than others, and I can't remember which ones those were. The Marshall counties. Yeah, so Marshall counties seem to be kind of favorable between a few of them, a few of the council members that were spoken to prior to today, so. Thoughts, comments?
Comments? Anybody? Question? So, have you discussed, like, the potential of this with employees, and everyone is aware of this? I guess that's one question, and my second.
Yeah, the first papers I handed out are the petition.
That's okay, all right, so that answers that question, and that's a very large amount.
Right, so, I haven't talked to any of my employees about this, actually. They came to me and told me about it. We kind of got together, and then they bonded on me. And then Lacy had a conversation with me, and I said, you know, I don't disagree with it.
My, I guess my second question is, with basically what you would be proposing, do you think that would be, that would influence their decision to stay on longer with the county?
Yes. I don't think it hurts anything. It has something for them to work towards each year, instead of having to wait 26 years to get $300.
I mean, just myself, what's $300 going to do to keep me here? Nothing.
Right.
You know?
And I do understand what it costs to retrain people.
And then, you know, 78, or 75,000 seems like a lot. You're already spending 14,000. You're spending more than that, retraining. I mean, I don't know what it costs for, like Travis, to retrain a deputy, but I know it's expensive. It's a huge amount. For me, if I was to lose my paver operators, that experience wouldn't just affect what we can do, it's going to affect the whole county. You're going to lose a lot of experience, knowledge. It's hard to keep them at good wages, let alone...
Just for an example, what would it cost in terms of hours to retrain, to train...
It would be seasons. It takes seasons to learn how to run the paver efficiently and effectively. Yeah, it's not something I could put you on and teach, I could teach you, but you couldn't manage. For instance, John, tell him what it costs to get, for you to get a CDL license for employing. It's, it's $5,000 to $7,000 for us to train someone with a CDL. That's worth quite a bit there. And CDL drivers, all of my CDL drivers could easily go make more money elsewhere, you know? A lot of them choose to work there because it fits their lifestyle, and that's, myself included, it fit my lifestyle, but it's harder and harder to keep them there.
Understood. Any others?
Do you know when we, that policy came out, or our ordinance or whatever?
I know it was before 2000.
So obviously, you know, inflation and those kind of things, you know, $300 is enough to...
No, I couldn't, I...
Yeah, I mean, and just to compare, like, the city just increased theirs, and, you know, someone at 10 to 14 years is $5,000, and then 15 to 19 years is $7,500, and anybody over 20 is $10,000.
And I think everybody that signed up would be more than open for that.
No, I'm not saying, no. I just...
If you want to use that as a favorite.
All right. Yeah. I was just saying, you know, they, you know, they see that that was a need to increase, and I feel like we should be the same, at least to, to do something, so.
And I, you know, I know you've already set a budget for this year, for this. It could easily be changed with an amendment to the salary ordinance and an appropriation, if you so desire.
And that is coming out a rainy day, right? Is that what you said? Is that correct?
Well, currently, yes.
Currently, yes.
And I know I asked you, Kathy, do you know how much we put in a rainy day every year?
We have knocked down anything the last two years.
So we don't put anything in?
We're waiting on the final numbers, because we're allowed to roll over 15%.
I'm hoping they don't get any more.
And so she's working on that, so it'll be a while.
There is the land tipping fee fund?
We're not.
To possibly be used for the fagels away?
We've got too much going on to even mess with the host fee fund.
Well, I don't...
It's, that could end tomorrow. It won't, but it could end tomorrow.
Right, unless it goes away.
That's the problem with that.
Yeah.
We have, we have attacked it pretty hard, buying ambulances, paying for an ambulance service. We've got courthouse coming up, we've got ambulances coming up in another two to three years, and we have to be protective of that, because right now, that's bailing us out, period, is that host fee fund. That is covering our big expenditures. And so, that, as far as I'm concerned, that should be off limits, because that's, this is a salary thing. This is not a capital asset that we have to purchase, and that's why that host fee is so important for us to be able to even come close to balancing the budget. Like I said, we have attacked it real hard this past year, and we know we've got some big-ticket items coming, that we're going to have to hit it hard again, and we're going to need that money. So, if I can get on my soapbox a minute.
It doesn't go in your budget or anything, longevity?
It's all operating, you guys actually budget that? The departments do not?
Gotcha.
Well, I think employees of the Clark County are our biggest asset, no doubt, and you're all underpaid. I'll be the first to say it. But we also have 22,000 other people to consider when we have to do this, so we have to weigh each other. To me, well, I don't disagree with this, and I explained earlier to someone, this is a budget issue. Not 20 days into the new budget, but something we need to attack in June or July during the budget, so we don't even afford it. You asked me 38, another $38,000, but this year, we had to do some cutting to come in under what State Board of Accounts said we could pay. And I don't want to... And I don't want to use anything reoccurring out of host fee, out of, and I didn't realize it come out a rainy day. So with that, then that's my mistake. But I guess, I think we need to talk about it. I think we need to think about it.
I don't think any of us feel like we need to have a decision tonight, but I think it needs to be on your radar and it will make this comment. You just said, you know, it's already been budgeted for this year. If you wait, you wait, you're going through two years before anybody would receive anything, if you did change it. So that's something to consider about, consider moving forward before the new year, if it could...
And that's, that's something we can look at, but I just, you know, the far as the salary, we're only 20 days into the new budget. Additional appropriations or salary ordinances, I don't want to change that right now. That's pretty quick. And so that's, you know, again, am I guessing? No. I just think we need to figure out a way to fund it and to fund it reoccurringly so that down the road it continues.
And that's why we're coming to you now, so you can plan ahead and think about this, hopefully do something before December comes around, if possible.
Do we think like a committee or something would be beneficial in this scenario? To get some people together and kind of talk about it?
See, we can talk about it as a group. Talk about it as a group, it's got to be public.
Yeah, exactly.
I personally am not opposed to doing something. I think we need to, what we do is not much to even consider longevity pay. My problem with the host fee, what happens if it goes away? We can't take this away. We can't make it contingent. We're going to do longevity as long as we have the host fee. That's not fair to people. I think we have to figure out a way to fund it in the budget without relying on something that at some point in time is going to go away. That's one of my biggest complaints in the council. We always rely on the host fee to bail us out. We need to learn to be sufficient without that because someday we're not going to have that. We're fortunate that we do. It allows us to do some things that we can't do otherwise or wouldn't be able to do. So I think we need to collectively figure out a way, whether it's each department can figure out a way to budget it, what they need or whatever, but I do agree, we need to address it.
Could be a possibility, maybe each department doing a percentage of it or something.
Right.
I don't know.
The funding is going to be the tricky part because obviously, you know, every dollar we spend, we're spending the taxpayers' money. But...
But if you, if you do continue to do nothing, you're not going to have a word.
No, I think we need to do something.
Because a lot of people are going to leave and...
Well, unfortunately, small counties tend to be proving grounds. I mean, we're not a lone Mohican there. Law enforcement goes to a little area, gets them to pay for their training, they do their time, they leave, they go someplace else, make more money. Yes, it's a problem. I don't know if we're going to offer enough to stop that, but it's certainly going to help.
At least we can, yeah, Travis, we can check.
So my question is, the, in 2024, $14,000 was paid, but $31,000 was budgeted?
Yes.
Is that because of retaining people?
So if you look down here at your proposal, you had 17, this is off of the 24s. So you had 17 employees. Well, basically you had 57 employees that received longevity. So there was twice budgeted what was needed to pay them out at $200 and $300 increments. If that makes sense to you?
Any other questions?
Something for you to consider.
I think we can take another advice.
We have to, we have to have some conversations in a way or another.
If we may have to, Chase, is we're out of having a committee to talk about it to make it up. The issue is we've got two on the council who are going to have to step aside because it affects their families. Now, they could be on the committee, absolutely, but as far as what comes to vote...
I didn't say they didn't have to step down. They have to step aside because it's conflict of interest.
And I don't mean step down as far as step off the council. I do not mean just as far as...
They have to stand for the vote.
Thank you. Am I wrong, terminalize it? Well, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Budget time, let's get you up again.
I'll be back for you.
And that's, that's appropriate thing to do.
But like I say, we want to bring it to your attention now so that we all can set our term and...
Another thing we have to look at is we don't know what the state's going to do. And some of the radical ideas that the state is encumbering down there is we're going to get the arrows thrown at us because they're going to pat themselves on the back saying, we cut taxes, we're going to change the funding issues, you counties figure out how to do it. And so we're kind of waiting for the budget stuff to come back from the state, as Casey said, with her, with property taxes, to understand where we can go, which will help us, I'm afraid, budget come July is, it's going to be treacherous, but we'll get through it.
If any of you would like to have me forward you the ones, House Enrollment Acts that are heading to the floor this year that are going to probably have traction, I'm more than happy to forward you those and then I can give you links as to how you can actually track those bills in real time so you can see what's happening with them. And all, Governor Brown's proposals and what he is behind would decimate our tax base and how we function. So I'm kind of shocked by all of that.
The one conference I was at was how they were going to discuss the road funding. And it's, it's a nightmare now and it would just complicate those gentlemen's jobs exponentially as far as what they've got, some of their proposals.
It's pretty ugly, but there's only a few that have real traction, so we'll see. See what happens.
Please, please do.
Okay, I'll send you that.
Any other comments? If not, we do not have any transports, transfers or additional appropriations. So any other new business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say moved.
Chase, move.
Second.
Barry, second, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you very much.